The regular Board of Education meeting for May 7, 2018. This is also known as our voting meeting. And Mrs. Bonifield will not be here tonight, so Mr. Centers is going to act as our secretary. So, Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
And President Johnson.
Here. We have a quorum. Mrs. Burton, would you help us with the pledge tonight?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, and welcome to our regular meeting tonight. For those of you at home who would like to follow along with our agenda, you can go to lavoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, and you can drop down and follow along. Anyone who's in our audience tonight, if you'd like to follow along, you can find an agenda outside of the left-hand door, and just to the right on the table, you're able to find that. You'll also find there the blue slips for anyone who wants to address the Board during audience communication. We'd ask that you fill one of those out and hand it in to any one of the Board members, and we'll take care of that. Tonight, because it's a voting meeting, you're not going to hear the depth of discussion that you would normally hear, say, at our study session or a committee of the whole, because we've already hashed over these items at least twice before, and in some cases more than that. So, tonight will be sort of truncated, but there may be some questions and discussions as we go along. One of the things that this district prides itself on is our climate goal. And I'm going to make it a practice to read this each regular meeting that we have, so that everyone understands what that climate goal is. And that says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another." That is something that this Board takes as a very, very important concept, the respect. And as a Board, we don't always agree on items, but we always respect each other, and we listen to each other's views. There may be spirited discussion at times, but we still respect each other's viewpoints. What a special way to show our children how to act. We take that as... We are teachers up here as well, and it's a great way for our young students to follow along and to see exactly how people do that. And we will respect everyone that comes before this meeting, and we hope that everyone who addresses the Board will treat us with respect as well. With that, we will go to Item 3, Communications. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson. Does this sound okay?
No.
Volume's good? Okay? Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. Our school district is so fortunate to have such a supportive community. Whether it is support from our local businesses, our community members, or the many local nonprofit organizations, we appreciate every single bit. One such source of support is the LPS Education Foundation, a nonprofit that is dedicated to enriching the resources in Livonia Public Schools to benefit our students and our staff. This amazing group of volunteers runs several programs that provide families with a starting point for college savings, classroom grants for our teachers, and grants for specific departments within the district. Each year around this time, we invite the Foundation to provide the Board and the community with an update. Foundation President Diane Palacelli, who is a Livonia resident and Ford Motor Company retiree, is always happy to share all of the wonderful things that are happening within the Foundation. At this time, I would like to extend our thanks to the Foundation, and I'd like to invite Mrs. Palacelli to share the latest and greatest from this wonderful organization. Mrs. Palacelli?
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, and good evening, Board President Johnson, Board members, and Superintendent Oquist. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you an update about the many accomplishments of the LPS Education Foundation. It is my privilege to be here this evening to talk about the Foundation, to talk about our programs, and how proud we are to serve Livonia Public Schools. With me tonight are four Directors from the Foundation's Board: Treasurer Ernie Nadelini, Director Lorna Durand, Director Paul Condon, and Director Diane Laura. In just a few minutes, Ernie and Lorna will share with you some of the accomplishments of the Foundation over this past year. But before I turn the podium over to them, I want to thank the many supporters of the Foundation, starting with the Board of Education, Superintendent Oquist, and many LPS employees who so graciously are committed to our Foundation. There are many volunteers in the community who contribute to the success of our events as well. We also receive generous financial support from LPS employees, LPS retirees, PTAs, PTSAs, individuals, and corporate donors. And without this community-wide support, the Foundation simply could not do what we do for our students. And at this time, I would like to introduce and thank two of our current corporate donors, starting with DFCU Financial. Representing them this evening are Senior Vice President Melody Majewski and Vice President and Branch Manager Teresa Aquino. Would you please join me at the podium? DFCU Financial has been a part of our community since 1996. In fact, they are a founding partner of the Foundation, being one of the first to offer their financial support, starting in 2007. And their generosity has continued each and every year, with their gifts over these many years totaling in excess of $100,000. Their enthusiasm for our mission is also known by the visits they have made to the classrooms that benefit from the grants that they have funded. We very much appreciate your support over the years, and I have a certificate of recognition that I'd like to give to both of you. Thank you. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to DFCU Financial for its continued financial support of the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation, dated May 7, 2018, signed by myself and Superintendent Oquist. Thank you so much. Thank you both. Thank you very much. We're pleased to accept this award, and we are very, very proud to be part of the Foundation and the community. Thank you so much. Next, I would like to recognize a service organization that is very well-known in our community, and that is the Kiwanis Club of Livonia Early Risers. Representing her club is President Melissa Rubing, and Melissa, could you please join me at the podium? The Kiwanis Organization has generously supported the Foundation and welcomed Kathy. Nice to see you. Kathy is president-elect, so she will be taking over from Melissa later this year? Excellent. Thank you for being here. The Kiwanis Organization has generously supported the Foundation for the past four years, and this group of volunteers is as enthusiastic as any group we know in our community. Their donations have made many classroom grants possible, and like DFCU Financial, they enjoy going into the classrooms to see how the students benefit from the tools they generously provide. We really appreciate your support, and thank you both very much, and I have a certificate for you as well. This certificate of appreciation is presented to the Kiwanis Club of Livonia Early Risers for its continued financial support of the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation, dated May 7, 2018, signed by myself and Superintendent Oquist. Thank you both very much.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for having us here today, and we're excited to be involved in the community and keep working towards better futures for our children in Livonia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, to provide the latest news about our programs, I'm going to turn the podium over to Ernie Nadelini and Lorna Durand. Thank you very much, and thank you to the community for all of your generous support.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening, everyone. President Johnson, Board of Education members, Superintendent Oquist, staff of the wonderful Livonia Public School District, and all of you in the audience, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to give you a short update on the status of our hallmark program that I think we have, is the NT 529 Program, College Savings Program. We initially offer $100 at no cost to the parents for those who choose to have their kindergarten or students participate in this, and we increment that on an annual basis, depending on our future budgets. The first year was 2008-2009 school year, and at that time, we had 170 students enrolled. This past year, 2017-18, we're really pleased to announce that we had over 460 new enrollees, new kindergarten students in the program. Overall, we currently have 2,450 students and a value, a market value, in their accounts of over $375,000. So, we're very, very pleased with that. In addition to that, we also have an endowment fund that is currently over $460,000, which will continue to help us support the programs in the future. Interesting to me, in two short years, and when you hit my age, two years is really short. In two short years, that very first cohort will be graduating from Livonia Public Schools, and will have the opportunity to provide the allocation of their funds that have been accrued over the intervening almost 12 years. So, we're really, really excited about that as well. Diane mentioned certainly the appreciation that we all have for the donors, the corporate founding partners, our corporate donors, individuals, individuals such as our employees, PTAs, PTSAs, community individuals, retirees, alumni, all of those who are responsible for the success of programs like we have. This program, the grant program, which you'll hear about shortly, and the other programs that we have had throughout the course of the years. So, we are very, very appreciative, because those folks are really the keys to our success. Without them, we wouldn't have the successful programs that we have. So, with that, I would like to introduce Lorna Durand, who will give you some information and update on the wonderful grant program that we have as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
President Johnson, Board members, and Superintendent Oquist, it is my privilege to be here tonight to share some information with you about the grant program, which is sponsored by the Livonia Public Schools Education Program. Some of you are aware that the grant program was initiated in 2013 to provide financial support to supply learning tools to LPS employees. The grants support the district curriculum, the LPS shared vision, and collective commitments, the district climate goal, and some other focused areas. Last school year, we opened the grant program to all employees, both instructional and non-instructional. The funding for the grant program is provided through the generous donations made by LPS employees, community donors, as you've heard about tonight, as well as financial support from the Foundation itself. During the five-year existence of the program, the Foundation has awarded 90 grants and It just makes me just so excited. This past year, we awarded 26 grants totaling $44,000. And it, I just, to go into the classrooms and to surprise those staff members on the day of the awards, it is probably one of the most exciting days that many of the grant committee members have had. And we are very, very proud of the program and the work that's been done over these past five years. In addition to the grant program and the money that has been distributed, we have the Grant Review Committee, and it's composed of retired educators. This past year, there were 10 educators on our committee, and next year, we're going to have 11. Their commitment to LPS and the Foundation is evident in the amount of time that they provide in their work. Tonight, we actually have Diane Laura here representing our committee. She is a retired educator, as well as a past Board of Education member. The benefits of the program are numerous. We have been witness to so many innovative ideas and practices. The rubric that we use to write and to score the proposals really emphasizes some very important things. It emphasizes the curriculum, the best practices, research, student academic, and social, emotional growth. And when we visit the classrooms to see the learning tools and practices put in place, we truly are impressed. And the staff is very good. I encourage them to provide opportunities for us to come into the classroom, to see the tools and the kids using them. And they do. In fact, this week, we're going to be at two buildings. We'll be at Grant and Kennedy with the committee, having some observations and interaction with the kids. The staff and students, we see them, that they are benefiting from the program. We see enthusiasm, we see application, and we see student growth, not only evident in our observations, but in the year-end summaries that the staff provide. So, it's just, it's been just a great program, and again, we appreciate all the support from the community, from the school district, from our donors, from our students and staff. It's been wonderful. At this time, I'd like to share one more thing with you. We're having another special event coming up. It is our Bounce Back to School. It'll be August 23 at Riley Upper Elementary School. We are really looking forward to it. In years past, we've had so many wonderful children and adults attend the program. We know the kids are having fun, we're having fun, and it's also a great fundraiser for the Foundation. So, thank you very much for letting us speak tonight. It has been our privilege. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the Board?
Just thank you, everyone, for all of their work.
Absolutely.
May I say a couple words?
Yes, absolutely.
I have such a, it's such a privilege and a pleasure to work with our tremendous LPS Foundation. I'd like to just take a moment and ask any of the Board of Directors who are here this evening to please stand one more time and be recognized. Please stand and be recognized. I have to tell you, we meet monthly, and we have a great time doing some tremendous work, led by our President Diane Palacelli, and such a dedicated group of individuals that combine innovative minds and caring hearts with truly, their purpose is solely to enrich and enhance the lives of our students, the work of our staff, and the offerings of our schools. We are so fortunate to have the LPS Foundation. I want to acknowledge my predecessor, Dr. Randy Leopold, who was also a huge partner in working to start this LPS Foundation, along with many founding members. And so, we are so grateful for all of your work. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to our generous corporate sponsors, and to all of our staff who helped contribute and make the grant program such a success as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. I'm going to put in my shameless pitch for the competitive edge. As Mr. Nadelini said, "At no cost to the families." This is an outstanding program. Any parents who are out there that have kindergartners coming in next year, you really can't afford not to sign up for this program. I say that every year, and I think the, we're going up a little bit, are we not, on our percentage, Ernie?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit, yes, yeah. Like I said, it will probably 60% plus this year.
Outstanding.
Oh, that's excellent.
The word is definitely getting out. People are starting to recognize. It's a difficult program, quite frankly, to start, because, you know, yeah, my approach would be, gee, you're giving me something for nothing. I'm not sure yet. But as people evolve, the word spreads, other parents that have children in the program, so it's become quite popular over the last several years.
At the risk of aligning myself with the former president, read my lips. There is no cost, so sign up. Thank you. All right. I wanted to indicate one thing. We are going to take a short break after Item 3F, so we can recognize and congratulate some of our recipients tonight. So, at this point, we'll move on to Item 3B, our Golden Apple Award. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize another special member of our LPS family. The Golden Apple Award is issued to those who go above and beyond that which is expected, doing so with exceptional care, concern, and a genuine passion to improve the school atmosphere for our students and our staff. Tonight's Golden Apple Award goes to a 25-year employee and Churchill High School graduate who puts his heart and soul into every day he spends taking care of Frost Middle School as its building supervisor. At this time, I'd like to, let's give a round of applause to Mr. Ron Caperton, as he makes Congratulations.
Thank you.
For the time being, just try to relax while I brag about you for a few minutes, okay? All right. Just thinking about the long-to-do list that is tackled each day by our school custodians is exhausting. Cleaning dozens of rooms, sweeping, mopping, and shining what must seem like miles of hallways and floors, setting up tables and chairs, taking down tables and chairs in a continuous rotation, and don't forget about those coming, that they come to the rescue of our kids who inform us with the slightly green complexion that they're not feeling so well, right? Mr. Caperton is Frost Middle School's go-to guy and someone who has gone the extra mile to ensure all Frost Falcons have an enjoyable experience. As noted in the nomination, which was submitted by parent Donna Blouett, who is in the audience in the fan club area over here, thanks for being here, Mr. Caperton orchestrates a reward system during lunchtime in which students can earn Falcon dollars. These dollars may be turned in for the chance to win prizes or the chance to play the Xbox video game system on the big screen, on the stage, in the cafeteria, with their friends. How cool is that? During lunchtime. This reward system is something that complements Frost's Positive Behavior Intervention and Support System, according to Principal Mr. Tony Abate. Mr. Abate and Assistant Principal Shannon Wheeler have also joined the fan club over here. Thanks for being here. Mr. Abate said in the, in the supporting documentation that came along with the award, quote, "On any given day, visitors to the Frost Cafeteria may now see groups of students dancing along to 'Just Dance' on the big screen, cheering on a spirited game of Madden between classmates, or calling, calling for the jackpot on the prize wheel as the prize wheel spins on the stage. This has proven to be a very clever way to expand our PBIS program, and it's been quite a lot of fun for students." Ron's incentive plan also allows Falcon dollars to be earned when students recycle their pop or juice cans. Ron collects these returnables for significant returns to the school. Just a few of the items Ron has been able to purchase with these returnable funds from the pop and juice cans include an office water dispenser, a backpack leaf blower, a small cargo trailer, and even an office printer. Impressive. The money can also go toward paying the athletic participation fees for students who may not be able to afford to do so. Ron is quoted as saying, "The more cans that we collect, the more we can do to make our building operate better and help more students participate in sports." According to Mrs. Blouett, Ron shows students that many small actions can add up to big results that can impact their world. Mr. Abate notes that Ron has taken on some important aesthetic projects around the school recently, including painting the recently remodeled counseling office, painting the back and the sides of the backstage area and the, of the stage area and the cafeteria, and cleaning out and painting a former storage area that connects with the media center's makerspace. A quote from Mr. Abate sums up Ron's work ethic nicely. "He approaches any given project with intense focus and completes it with great efficiency and attention to detail. His leadership in these endeavors has contributed significantly to the aesthetic appeal and overall functionality of the, of the building, both inside and out." At this time, I would like to invite Board Trustee Karen Bradford to join us at the podium, and Mrs. Bradford is going to present you with the official Golden Apple plaque. And I should also note, Ron, that there's a golden apple pin here attached to the back, too.
Wear that for a certain amount of time.
Dress up your shirts a little bit, yeah, every day.
Thank you. I have a few more tidbits of information from Principal Tony Abate and what he thinks. He says, "Ron routinely goes above and beyond his job responsibilities. He is creative in finding ways for students to participate in the school climate program. He's not afraid to step outside of his comfort zone." Is tonight hot? If it means students will benefit. Another one, see, there you go. "Ron has taken a leadership role in several projects around the school and shows great pride in those projects and in the school." And here's a quote, one more quote from Principal Abate. "The Frost community is proud to see Ron Caperton honored for his work with the Golden Apple Award and the Board of Education, as well as Superintendent Oquist. We all send our congratulations to you." A duly deserved award. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Enjoy, enjoy, and hang that somewhere special. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and I got to, you know, say thank you to the Frost PTSA. I wouldn't be here without their help.
We appreciate all the work you do.
And the best part about this is I get all new seventh graders every year.
Another whole group.
To train, right? To train. Thank you so much.
Okay, that'll take us to Item 3C, LPS Points of Pride.
Okay. Thank you, President Johnson. Each month, we, we love sharing a point of pride with the Board and with the community. It's our way of highlighting our programs and other great things that are happening in our schools. This month, we are featuring the awesome efforts that have been taking place over the past few years at Hoover Elementary. How many schools you know maintain a close relationship with the National Wildlife Federation? How many do you know, how many schools you know produce educational videos affectionately known as "Live from the Dumpster"? How many schools have a bona fide outdoor classroom in which students study ecosystems and plant life, among other earthy topics? At Hoover, these things and much more are a way of life. They represent the ecology that is lived each day at Hoover. Without taking anything more from their quite thorough presentation they have planned, we've got the entire area here who has joined us, a fairly large section. Please allow me to introduce Hoover's principal and lead eco-meister, Mrs. Julie Lynn.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, President Johnson, Superintendent Oquist, and Board members. We're really excited to share with you some of the things that have been happening at Hoover. We have quite a lot going on. We did the best we could to get it into our 15-minute limit. Our green team is here. Our efforts began in 2013-14 school year. It began with an EcoAction Committee, was one committee in our PTA. We've had many assemblies, many activities over the past four years to get us where we are now. I would like to start by introducing Sean Gross, who is head of our EcoAction Committee.
As you can tell, technical difficulties, Murphy's Law is happening. Just give us a moment. Wouldn't you know, it skips ahead. All right. The National Wildlife Federation EcoSchools programs gives us numerous pathways to work on in order to achieve various levels of certification. These pathways encompass eSTEM learning modules. Each level of certification requires us to choose There we go. We currently have achieved our bronze and silver level certifications, and we're working towards a green level, which is the highest level certification. Now, to put everything in perspective about what's happening with this movement, we are one of 5,000 schools recognized in the United States, one of 55,000 schools in 67 countries worldwide, which makes us part of the largest environmental eSTEM learning education movement in the world. So, that's pretty cool. Many staff members, parents, and students have joined us this evening to discuss the pathways we are working on. I'll begin with the Consumption and Waste pathway. Consumption and Waste pathway focuses on lessening our consumption, encourages us to recycle, reduce, and reuse our waste. At Hoover, we've been recycling paper, oil pouches, and now water bottles. We've also assembled, we have had assemblies with students focusing on the three Rs to discuss strategy and how to lessen our food waste at lunchtime. And over the past couple of years, we have raised over $1,400 in grant money through the Wrigley Foundation. We've also created an Eco Action Ambassador program where students, student leaders, and parents assist in the recycling efforts at Hoover. Two students from each classroom, first through fourth grades, are chosen to be ambassadors, and they work at recess, they give up their own times once a month at second recess. We've invited a few Eco Action ambassadors to speak out on some of the projects that they are working on. Help me welcome Eco Action Ambassador Jackson Gross.
We have recycling bins in every classroom. We weigh the bins every week, and we record the weight on a graph.
Thank you, Jackson. Now, next up, help me welcome Dominic Testa.
Hoover has also held a coat drive and a shoe drive. We have collected 1,100 pounds of shoes to be reused. The Eco Action ambassadors have helped bundle these to be donated.
And next, we have Eco Action Ambassador Owen Gross.
The ambassadors work at after-school events. They show people where to recycle their bags and cans.
I know that was a lot for my son, that's good. Nate, we liked, next we'd like to welcome Eco Action Ambassador Kate Stempak.
This year, we were partnering with GM to recycle water bottles. We will be using them to make coats and car parts.
Thank you, Kate. Next, I'd like to introduce Eco Action Parent Ambassador Nancy Gregg to talk about the Healthy Living Pathway.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi there. The Healthy Living Pathway promotes a healthy lifestyle while connecting to the natural world. Please welcome Asher to talk about some special things our PE teacher, Charles Alathlin, does to promote healthy living.
Mr. Earl has a family fitness night every year. We get to do exercise stations and have a healthy snack.
we have in our country, encourages the children to participate in the Marshawn Marathon, and organizes our Field Day. Students are introduced to the walking path at recess as an option for getting exercise while outdoors. In the winter months, students are introduced to snowshoeing during physical education class as an outdoor activity to help them stay fit. We are working on incorporating a much larger walking path on our playground, which will also go through our gardens and near our Arbor Day trees. At this time, please welcome John Youngworth, our School Library Media Specialist.
The biodiversity pathway encourages students to investigate and increase biodiversity at school and beyond. In the spring of 2016, we planted a small butterfly garden in front of the school. Students grew parsley from seeds in various classrooms to transplant into the garden. And during Field Day that year, one of the stations was a planting station, during which all classes visited the butterfly garden and were involved in some aspect of planting. The kindergarten classes took in the butterfly eggs from the garden the following fall and were able to watch them go through the life cycle and turn into butterflies. That was exciting. In 2017, we were also selected as an Arbor Day school from the city of Livonia, and we were given three native trees to plant on our playground, increasing our biodiversity even further. That same year, as a part of the Eco Schools program through the National Wildlife Federation, Mrs. Skabinski, a fourth-grade teacher, and I partnered with a school in Taipei, Taiwan, in which we collaborated to choose one of the pathways to work on. We shared our progress as we went, sending postcards and emails to update each other. And as part of that partnership, we chose to plant biodiversity gardens at Hoover, outside of the library and outside of one of the fourth-grade classrooms, with the goal of attracting native animals and insects. Throughout the 2016-17 school year, Mrs. Skabinski's class held fundraisers. They wrote letters to local businesses and held tattoo sales at lunch and recess. They raised almost $2,000 for the gardens. Yes. So, also, many local gardeners from the Livonia Garden Club came to Hoover throughout that year to present information to the students about pollinators, butterflies, and composting. They also helped with the planting. And in May of 2017, we planted the two gardens using all native species, and Paula Tutman came out for the planting, and we were live on Channel 4. We have a short clip from that, from that newscast here.
Fourth-grade students over at Hoover Elementary School in Livonia are working on a global education project through the National Wildlife Federation. Paula Tutman is live at the school this afternoon to show us how it all works. Hi, Paula.
Hey, Carrie, yeah, we all know that a fourth grade's job is to play, right? Well, today, at this particular school, that agenda also includes paving the platter. See what these kids are doing right here? This is no ordinary landscaping project, I promise you. It's called biodiversity. If you don't understand the importance of it, ask a fourth grader. More specifically, ask a fourth grader at Hoover Elementary School in Livonia.
What's in that?
You know what? I heard that there's food scraps, there's leaves, there's twigs, and they grind it up, and they, it's two and a half years old, the soil that they created for us.
These 10-year-olds have spent the last year learning about Michigan's indigenous plant and animal life. Really want to compliment them here. And they get that it's in trouble.
Like bees, because they are pollinators, and we need them.
According to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in Michigan, right now, there are 27 plants, mammals, reptiles, birds, and butterflies on the endangered or threatened list. That means they're very close to going away because of the chain of ingestion, insecticides, and lost habitat. Lisa is very, very concerned.
Okay, so we just show a short clip from that, it's four minutes long, but that was really exciting for the students and staff at Hoover to have Channel 4 out. We actually, I'd like to introduce one of the former students from Mrs. Skabinski's class. Last year, Allison Randall came to join us and talk about her experience.
Hi, my name is Allison Randall, and I am a fifth grader at Riley Elementary School here in Livonia. My fourth-grade class at Hoover Elementary started the biodiversity garden on the playground next to our, next to our school. I planted milkweed as part of the project to attract monarch butterflies. We did this garden to bring back natural wildlife. I'm glad I was a part of the 2017 Hoover Elementary biodiversity garden.
Thank you, Allison. Next, I'd like to introduce Hoover parent and Eco Action team member, Niki Mahalich, to speak about the Schoolyard Habitat Pathway.
So, the focus of the Schoolyard Habitat Pathway is to design, develop, and then maintain an outdoor learning laboratory. It's not meant to be like a stagnant sort of garden, and we, we are going to be planting and changing it throughout the student's life, so we actually didn't, we actually have space for further planting in it, too. During the 2016-17 school year, plans for the outdoor classroom began to develop. There was a former Hoover student and Boy Scout named Hans Anderson who heard about our plans and decided to take it on and be the lead on the build. And he helped us with fundraising and building it as his Eagle Scout project. During the summer of 2017, this amazing classroom was installed, and it includes an amphitheater seating for an entire class, or two, or three, it's pretty big, garden rings for each classroom to plant seeds, and many garden beds for various purposes, and native trees and shrubs. During the fall of 2017, I assisted each class in choosing and planting native seeds in their class ring. I went to each classroom, spoke to them a little bit about cold, moist stratification, that's something that our native seeds need to survive the winter, and we talked about it, and they learned what's special about Michigan seeds. And then, we each went in there, each classroom went, and they, each kid got to plant seeds into their own ring, and they'll get to see them start to sprout up this year, and they sort of have ownership over their own ring. Teachers have been using the outdoor classroom for reading and writing and science activities, or just as a space to get outside and teach class because it's a nice day. The outdoor classroom was featured on Mitch Albom's The Heart of Detroit, which I think Sean is going to, or John is going to play for you, when she gets over it. There you go.
Eagle Scout Hans Anderson had an idea for an environmentally friendly outdoor classroom at a local elementary school.
Make the school more green, and have the kids go outside, and learn about the environment, and learn how to take care of it.
The Hoover Eco Action Outdoor Classroom at Hoover Elementary in Livonia is one of the first of its kind in Michigan.
There's tier seating in the corner, and it kind of just like overlooks the garden areas, sort of indoor/outdoor learning. Yeah, teachers can come out and have reading time, or come out and like actually teach a lesson.
Hans learned many lessons during this project, especially from his mom, Kathy. Although she recently passed away, the memory of her support and guidance stayed with him.
Teaching me how to do things, how to call and talk to people about getting supplies, and she was like always sitting there next to me, going like this, or like, no, stop, and do that.
It's your fundraising.
Yeah.
So, in your mind, is it a bit of a dedication to her?
Oh, for sure, she was the driving force.
Hans has taken that driving force and applied it to everything he learns in life.
What would you say that you learned from this whole experience?
When you say you're going to do something, then do it. I had to lead people and take charge and say like no to this, against that. Felt pretty good. It was like a local experience for me.
In honor of his mother, Hans Anderson is giving students the chance to be one with nature, right here in the heart of Detroit.
Very cool. And one thing I wanted to note also, we, we pretty much exclusively use native to Michigan, southeast Michigan plants and seeds, so the kids learned all about the importance of that, too. And I'll bring it back to Julie.
Hans wanted to be here tonight, but he had his pack meetings every Monday night, so he couldn't be here. He would have been here to present with us.
So, I'm going to speak about the Energy Pathway. In our Energy Pathway, we analyze and measure effective ways to save energy. Our fourth-grade student team conducted our audit. We counted every light bulb, analyzed energy vampires, which are power strips, monitors, pencil sharpeners, stereos, or any device that remains plugged in when not in use. They also observed our windows for air gaps, figured out our average time that the lights are on in each classroom, calculated our classroom trash, trash average, and counted plastic water bottles that were used, and we even counted our staff disposable Styrofoam coffee cups. The data was then entered into the carbon calculator. This year, we are emitting 435 pounds of CO2 or greenhouse gas emissions per student. We are really taking a look at where can we improve before we do our energy audit next time. So, each of the staff did receive a beautiful cup this year, so we will be encouraging them to put coffee in here. We will no longer be purchasing these cups. We also are going to be encouraging staff to unplug appliances on weekends. We're great about doing it over the holidays with our energy savings, but when they're plugged in, it's still using energy, the students have learned. So, we will be re-administering our energy audit to see if that's had an impact after we share these tips with staff and families. We also had a DTE assembly. DTE and consumers' powers have joined efforts to help educate students on ways they can save energy in their home. So, our fourth-grade classes participated. They learned how electricity is produced and how families use energy. You might not know, but 56% of the energy in your home is used to heat or cool your home. 27% is used for lighting and your appliances, and 17% is used to heat water for showers or washing clothes. So, each of our fourth-grade students received this energy kit, which is worth $50 at no charge. And they received a, I'm going to point out a couple of things that we really like in the energy kit. A timer that sticks in the shower, so we teach them to try and have a five-minute shower. It's challenging. An LED nightlight. They get two LED light bulbs, aerators for your showerhead, kitchen, and bathroom, because that saves, it limits the amount of water that's coming out. They teach the students how to install these, and their directions for their families. And then, the parents are asked to complete a, like a follow-up sheet if they actually installed those. If we get 80% of those returned, then each classroom gets $100 donation from DTE. So, this is, I believe, the fourth year that we've done that, and we've been able to earn the $100 for each classroom every year. All right, we are going to end with our Live From the Dumpster.
Live From the Dumpster.
I'm Noel, reporting to Live From the Dumpster, outside of Hoover Elementary School. It's been an exciting week here at Hoover. The second graders are having a roundup today. Every grade is having a concert outside next Thursday. It's called Hoover Stop. The second graders collected cereal boxes for the charity blessings in a backpack and today's pajama. Hoover PTAs have a PTA Appreciation Night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Sunday at the Rock Center. Adults are free, kids are $13 each. Shout out to parents of Hoover students who are making boxes for the move. The Hoover Action Theater charities collected waste paper for the week. Are you ready for the numbers? This week, we recycled 175 pounds of paper. That's 79.4 kilograms of paper going to recycling center. Great job, Hoover Rockets. Attention, Hoover Rockets. June 3rd and 4th, we are going to be assembling teams to help build our butterfly garden. Please stay tuned for more of them. And now, it's time for our energy tips of the week. Make sure that you're logging off those computers in the computer lab and hand menu lab, and not just turning them on when you're off. Ask your parents to turn down your hot water thermostat down to 150 degrees Fahrenheit from 120 degrees Fahrenheit. And today, we are going to Miss Hawker's class to hear a special poem. Mister Teef, roll the tape.
Okay, when I say eco, you say action, eco?
Action!
Okay, awesome.
(Singing) Take care of the earth, take care of the earth, burn the fall. Return the fallen leaves, grow the rest of the grass. Cycle and use, cycle and use.
Teachers, do you have a song, poem, artwork, or anything related to our eco-action movement? Contact Miss McGee and your class will be featured in the next episode of Live from the Dumpster. That's all that's going to be for today. At Hoover, we are reaching for a better world. I'm Norm and I am Lilly reporting live from the dumpster. Hoover helping wildlife. Rip it, rip it.
Outstanding.
That is wonderful.
Nice job, everyone.
Cameras from the board.
Totally blown away.
It's just a quick question. Um, I'm not sure which one can answer. Uh, can you tell us a little bit about the, the grant you got from Wrigley and, uh...
Yeah, um, through my, our partnership with the National Wildlife Federation, um, her...
Just so that folks at home can hear you.
Great. Um, our, um, eco-action coordinator is Jennifer Dowd and sometimes she would email me and say, hey, can you guys jump on this grant? And I'm like, okay, sure. How much time do we have? A week? And then we're like, all right, let's get to it and fill out the paperwork. And we did that for two years and, uh, got $700 pop.
Excellent.
For, um, having the kids weigh them. You might have saw the picture where they're at the boxes and they're standing on scales and they're recording it on a graph. And, um, I think we're well over 3,000 pounds of paper in the last several years, I mean last almost four years. We've, we've done a lot.
That's great.
Got a little cash for it too, which is nice.
Yes.
Excellent.
Great, grants are, are not easy to get. I mean, it sounds like it's, it's free money, but it's, there's always a, a certain amount of work that's got to go into it and, and no guarantee of that outcome. So thank you very much for, for all of your efforts.
We also got our grant from the Southeast Michigan Butterfly Association.
Yeah, $150 for planting native plants.
That's excellent.
Excellent.
Terrific.
Mrs. Oakwist.
You know, congratulations. Thank you so much Hoover Rockets for being here tonight. We are so proud of you. I just wanted to say, one of the things that strikes me as being so impressive about this work is the multifaceted nature of it. There are so many different efforts. It's not just one element with regard to this work and it's been sustained over a number of years. Um, so that is not easy to do. It's not easy to do without many hands and many dedicated individuals. So, um, from the students, the staff, and the tremendous, um, parent volunteers, I congratulate all of you on this, on this tremendous effort. Thank you.
Outstanding. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, that will take us to item 3D, recognition of board members. Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay. Thank you, President Johnson. Uh, let me start off by saying there are school boards and then there are honor boards. We are so proud to say that our Livonia Public Schools Board of Education is indeed an honor board, an achievement that is, that has involved each of its seven members. To become a Michigan Association of School Boards honor board, all seven members must have met the requirements to become a certified board member through M A S B. For the benefit of the community, this achievement is no simple task. It requires many hours of classwork and dedication to becoming effective certified board members. Each board member has reached certification at different times. While each has reached a certification at different times, it is somewhat rare to have all seven members with at least a level one certification serving on the board at the same time. Um, and this is on Good Source from the M A S B. Our board joins a very limited number of boards across the state to receive this very special recognition. To mark the occasion, we have, uh, prepared a certificate for each of you, which reads Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Trustee, and it has each of your names, uh, for the commitment and dedication in achieving with your board colleagues the M A S B honor board status. And this is signed by our superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist. And if I may approach the board? I have one for each member.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stacy.
Very nice. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. I've got Tammy's connection.
Yes. Yeah, we'll get her to her.
Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Oakwist, who has a few words to say as well.
I do. Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to acknowledge individual board members for three awards that they were also given at our recent, um, the recent awards dinner, uh, held, hosted by the Wayne County Association of School Boards. We had the pleasure of attending just a couple of weeks ago. And I'd like to recognize Karen Bradford and Crystal Frank, who both received their level one certification. Uh, they did so within their first year of being on the Board of Education. That involved a minimum of nine half-day classes, um, achieved within that year to receive the level one certification. Um, by Karen and Crystal, uh, going through that process, that allowed our board, um, to become an honor board within a year, um, of their joining. And we also had, um, Ms. Liz Jarvis, was, received the Award of Merit this year. And Liz has gone beyond the level one certification, as have a number of our board members, and was able to achieve that honor this year, um, because of her commitment in attending the M A S B classes. We have, um, beyond the professional development to which our board is so committed, um, they're, they commit their heart and soul to this work and we are so proud to work alongside you each and every day. Um, your dedication to our kids is really unwavering and to our staff. Um, so we are so proud to have Livonia Public Schools School Board, um, be an honor board. You are indeed correct that it is a rare honor amongst, um, the over 500 school boards, uh, in our state. And we were just thrilled, um, to have our board honored just a couple of weeks ago by the Wayne County Association of School Boards, um, on behalf of the state of Michigan. Congratulations to each of our board members and thank you.
And, and I just wanted to say a few words that we see that Karen and Crystal have received level one certification. That's only the beginning. Um, that's the, the minimum level. Uh, our board members to, to a member have gone we- well above that. There are 200 level courses, 300 level courses, and they have continued their education, um, since getting elected to the board. And that will continue as, as long as we're board members. We will educate ourselves. We're in the business of educating. It doesn't stop with the children. It continues with us. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for, uh, their effort. It's, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of dedication and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us to item 3E, nomination of parents to the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Committee. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education nominate Ms. Eileen Brant and Ms. Cara Clark for a three-year term, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, on the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Committee PAC.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Dr. Terrio.
Good evening, President Johnson. Board, Superintendent Oakwist, it is my pleasure and my honor to recommend Eileen Brant and Cara Clark as the Livonia representatives to the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Committee. Representatives are selected for a three-year term. This is Cara Clark's second term as a representative. She has two sons with an LPS. She is a frequent volunteer for our schools. At Kennedy, she is a Battle of the Books coach and involved with masterworks. She is a leader in policy and advocacy and supports other parents of students with special needs. This is Eileen's sixth term. Eileen has three sons, two of whom are still within LPS, and her oldest is graduating from Madonna University with high honors very soon. This weekend? Saturday. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Eileen is the Wayne Regional Autism Collaborative for Excellence Coordinator, an educational advocate and family outreach consultant for the ARC Downriver, on the advisory board for Michigan Family Voices, and is involved with a variety of other organizations. Please accept this recommendation of Cara Clark and Eileen Brant as our representatives to the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Committee.
Hello. Thank you all so much. Um, it's been an honor serving on the PAC and we do a lot of work at the Wayne County Parent Advisory Committee. Our meetings are always open, so I have to put that plug in. Um, they're the second Thursday of the month at 6:30 p.m. at Wayne RISA. So we encourage people to attend because there's always an educational piece to it. Um, and I've just been so happy to have Cara Clark come with me onto the, the PAC and share some of those responsibilities and duties. Um, I know I got to see Superintendent, uh, oh, sorry, Oakwist at, um, the, when we had the race, uh, community conversation here in Livonia, um, which was very well attended and, um, we've received a lot of positive feedback for that, um, in order to try and get employment for students with disabilities from here in Livonia. Um, so we're honored to be here and honored to serve on it.
Thank you.
I just want to second think, please, you're all invited to come to one of our meetings. There's always so much. We share the information with, with, oh my goodness, excuse me. We share the information with all the schools as well and we've had some parents that have come. There's always something wonderful to take away from every meeting. I'm honored to be another representative, be a representative once again. It has been my pleasure. I have learned so much and I love sharing the information with every family as well.
Uh, and one other thing we did want to mention is that one of the, um, one of the perks of the duty of being a representative is that we get to nominate either a group or an organization within Wayne County who positively impacts the lives of students with disabilities. So from in Livonia, we were able to, um, recognize Ms. Beth Sander and...
And I'm also nominating, uh, Ms. Tammy Danaher. She's a fourth grade teacher, uh, at Kennedy.
So we will be presenting that in front of the Wayne RISA Board of Education on May 16th. So we're very happy to do that.
Great. Very, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to recognize, um, Mrs. Brant's work. As she mentioned, um, the community conversations event was very well attended and, um, Mrs. Brant just did an exceptional job, um, advocating to our local community leaders, business leaders, inviting them to explore ways, um, that they could involve many of our students, um, in Wayne County and in Livonia, um, into their businesses and into their workplace. Um, as, as all of you know, we had the opportunity to have Project Search, um, be one of our points of pride earlier this year. Um, it truly was one of our, I think, you know, a very...
Yeah.
Hoover, we loved you too. It was one of our very favorites, but, uh, we don't, we don't choose favorites, but, um, the Project Search, um, presentation was really exceptional and, uh, the parent support, the community support, and most of all, the business support, um, was something that Mrs. Brant was able to highlight and also encourage other businesses to take that same lead. So thank you both for being tremendous advocates and we are thrilled you're willing to continue to serve. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burden.
Thank you very much to both of you for being, for being willing to serve and not only representing the students in Livonia Public Schools and your own school. It's, it's, it's a lot of work to just keep up with our own families and our own school itself, but to take your talents and your energies and serve the students in Livonia and in Wayne County is really commendable. Thank you so much for, for advocating for all of these students.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing then, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, uh, for the nomination of parents to the Wayne RISA Parent Advisory Committee. Uh, Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Burden.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
And President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, that will take us to item 3F, district update from the superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you. Uh, if our, if our friends can hang in just for a few more minutes. Uh, I know it's almost time for that break and we are almost there. Um, I'd like to just share a district update with you for this month, um, with some student highlights. Um, Caitlin Jodway is a student at Franklin High School and she was selected as a 2018 Top Youth Volunteer Distinguished Finalist in Michigan by a national program by the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. Caitlin organized a swim-a-thon that drew more than 100 swimmers and raised $24,000 to help a student with muscular dystrophy by a wheelchair-accessible band. So congratulations to Caitlin. Allison McConnell and Caitlin Rogish from Livonia Churchill have both been named two of eight finalists for Athlete of the Year in the sport of girls tennis, as identified by the Detroit Free Press. You may have just recently read that in the past couple of days. This is a very prestigious designation and we are thrilled to have two LPS students nominated for this award. Um, speaking of a special recognition, uh, Mr. Doug Coats, who, um, who organizes and leads our MSC program at Churchill, shared some pretty impressive news. He indicated that, um, in his work with MSC over many years, this is one of the most prestigious designations that a student has ever received. And I'm going to be talking about Churchill High School freshman Yajvan Ravan. He finished in the top 20 nationwide in the National Chemistry Olympiad exam and he will soon participate in the selection process for the International Chemistry Olympiad. He is a ninth grade student in the Livonia MSC program at Churchill. He scored in the top 20 of over 1,000 students who took the exam this past spring. Now, listen to what they get to do. This is pretty amazing. Yajvan and the other 19 top-scoring U.S. students will attend the Olympiad Study Camp at the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs from June 10th to June 25th. These students will receive intensive coaching in all branches of chemistry from three mentors and faculty of the U.S. Air Force Department of Chemistry. At the end of the study camp, four students will be selected to comprise the United States Team for the International Chemistry Olympiad to be held this year. So we are looking, uh, we are very much looking forward to hearing more about how that goes, but in any case, we are extraordinarily proud for Yajvan to be recognized in this way and not as a senior or as a junior or even as a sophomore, but as a freshman. Competing with students, um, throughout the country, uh, in this, in this really tremendously challenging, uh, exam. So we wish him the best. We have many talented music musicians across our district and music teacher Byron Turner recently shared the following accomplishments with us. Um, over 30 vocal music students from Stevenson participated in 14 different events at the Michigan, uh, School Vocal Music Association's State Solo and Ensemble. So that is their state championship, so to speak. Um, the State Solo and Ensemble Festival has a performance as well as a site reading component to determine the final rating. Thirteen of the 14 events earned a Division One rating, which is the highest rating, including three large ensembles, The Village Singers, The Nightingales, and the Men's Ensemble. So congratulations to all of these musicians. I'd like to recognize David Mitchell, Holmes Middle School teacher and Stevenson High School hockey coach, for two very special honors he received this spring. David was awarded the MHSAA Division Two Coach of the Year, um, for the state in March and just recently was one of four coaches in the state inducted into the Hall of Fame during their annual awards dinner. Two very significant and well-deserved honors for a tremendous coach in person. So we congratulate Coach Mitchell. So for all of those, let's give a big round of applause. We have a final congratulations to our high school robotics team, the Livonia Warriors, who have been with us at many meetings throughout this year. Um, they battled through the entire season with their hard work and dedication. At each of the competition, they earned enough points to move to the world championships last weekend held in Detroit. Uh, we are so very proud of them, as well as our newest robotics group, Team Tyros, made up of freshmen from each of our high schools. Um, and I want to thank the group for my wonderful lawn sign that they gifted me during our board meeting and I have displayed that proudly at our home on competition weekends. So, uh, I think people think I'm a robotics parent, which I love, um, but I'm really just, uh, helping to share in that, uh, in that pride that we have for our Livonia Warriors. We look forward to their special event tomorrow night. Our elementary schools are in full swing. Could you, could you agree with that, our folks at Hoover? Um, we have art fairs and music concerts and ice cream socials and more. Uh, it has been tremendous. So many wonderful events being planned at each of our elementary schools. And speaking of special events, this Wednesday, we'd like to invite our parent community to a special event, uh, designed just for them. Mrs. Jenkins, we recently sent out an email and that is a reminder, right? Okay. It's called We Are Better Together. It's an evening focused on safe schools, healthy students... It's an evening focused on safe schools, healthy students, and a caring community. So please join us if you are able to do so.
All right. That's it?
I could go on and on. I'd love nothing more than to talk about our awesome students and staff, and congratulations to each of our almost 1,900 staff members as we celebrate Staff Appreciation Week this week. We could not do it without you. Without question, each of you contribute to making us who we are, making our school districts a wonderful place for our students to come and learn each day, a rewarding place to work, and a point of pride for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest.
You are welcome.
We have come to the point of our break, and I know most of you just want to stay after the break because it's so riveting. But feel free to leave if you need to. We'll take about a five, 10-minute break, and then we'll be back. Thank you. All right, we are back for the remainder of our exciting regular meeting, and we will move on to item 3G, written communications. I have no written communications. Does anyone have any written communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to 3H, audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is anyone in our vast audience want to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll then move to item 3I, response to prior audience communication. I do not have any. Any from the board? No, we don't see any. All right. In that case, we will move right on to our next item, which is item 4, our consent agenda. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
I'm still enjoying our audience communications.
Daylight savings time?
Daylight savings. Okay, here we go. Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items, as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, meetings of the regular meeting of April 16th, 2018. 7A, approval of the cooperative agreement for LTP. 7B, approval of the cooperative agreement for LCTC. 7C, approval to purchase a copy paper for 2018, 2019. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Johnson.
Burton. Johnson. All habits do die hard, don't they? All right, the motion passes. That will then take us to item 6, instruction matters. And 6A is approval to purchase world language textbooks. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District purchase the following world language textbooks for a total cost of $161,846.32. The textbook, Te Branche, 2019, for French I courses from EMC School at a cost of $59,718.96. The textbook, Portfolio Deutsch, 2015, for German I courses from Klatt-Lagenzeit at a cost of $35,675.75. The textbook, Authentico A, 2018, for Spanish I courses from Pearson Education, Inc., at a cost of $66,451.61.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'm here this evening to bring a recommendation to purchase high school world language textbooks for Level I Spanish, French, and German. I would like to begin by taking a moment and thanking Mr. Matt Miga for his leadership, along with his team of world language teachers that spent a lot of time this year creating a vision for world language teaching and learning, along with evaluating and selecting the new materials being recommended. I would also like to thank Mrs. Ann Owen for her support of this committee throughout the year. As you know, our district has specific requirements for textbook adoptions, as outlined in our board policies. This committee of teachers represented all three high schools and two of our middle schools. They worked together to review the curriculum, current research and best practices, and current second language acquisition needs. They also established a needs assessment and the rubric for evaluating the textbooks. Then they broke off into language-specific committees to review materials. The top two textbooks in each language were used in classrooms, evaluated by students, and the final recommended texts were approved by the administrators. So this evening, we are recommending three textbooks for Level I Spanish. Authentico, which Mrs. Jarvis explained both the publisher and the year it was published, the total cost she also shared. This includes student textbooks, the teacher edition, resource workbooks, and an eight-year online license, and the other teacher support materials. We are also recommending Te Branche for French. It is currently being published, and we are recommending the 2019 version. This includes the student books, an eight-year online license for the textbook, teacher support and assessment materials, and access to the passport component. And finally, we are recommending for Level I German, the purchase of Portfolio Deutsch, and this includes student books, an eight-year online license, teacher support and assessment materials, and the online access for teachers. So the cost for the three world language textbooks totals $161,846.32. This money has been budgeted by the secondary textbook budget. Be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments? Mrs. Burton.
This is a question that I ask each time we purchase textbooks, and it's not so much for the board anymore, because we discussed this in our committee as a whole, but for the benefit of the public. Can you explain why we are purchasing both hardcover books and online version and not going online only?
Yes. So at this particular point in time, we still have the balance need of we purchase a hardcover textbook, and they provide us the online resources for free, or we buy the online textbook, and they provide us the textbooks. And we still have some students who need a textbook and don't have access at home, so we want to make sure that we have both available to students, both at school and at home.
Okay. So there is not a cost savings if we chose to go with just one or the other? Okay, thank you very much. Also, I wanted to thank you, and thank the committee, really, for the work that they did with students in using this information. I know that whenever we are purchasing textbooks, they're piloted in our classrooms and with students, but it was interesting for the board to hear feedback from this particular committee that some of the student feedback was used and actually swayed one of the decisions of the books, and other student feedback was deemed the students were just trying to get and choose the easiest version, which was not necessarily in their best interest. But we were very impressed to hear that the student input was weighed and considered very seriously. It was not taken summarily or discounted summarily, but taken with just as much value as the adult input. So thank you to the teachers who took the time to pilot it, and to the students who gave their honest feedback, because it does make a difference in these significant decisions.
I will share that with them. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Oakwest.
I just wanted to mention that this is, last year, the board asked for our academic services department to take, to bring to the board a recommendation with regard to a textbook adoption replacement. As you know, for many, many years, we did not have the funding to be able to move forward on a regular textbook replacement cycle. Thanks to the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, we were able to set aside significant dollars over the next three years to begin in earnest that replacement cycle. So I'd like to acknowledge the board for their approval of the utilization of funds for this very important purpose. As you know, we had many texts that were upwards of 12, 15, in some cases even more, as far as how many years they had been in use in the district. So we are on that, we are embarking on that ambitious process to go through a pretty extensive textbook replacement cycle. I'd like to acknowledge the academic services department and the members of that crew who have worked very, very hard. And in this particular case, I'd like to echo the sentiments in thanking Mr. Miga for his leadership in working with all three teams to bring these recommendations forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval to purchase world language textbooks. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That then moves us to item 7D, approval of bid results for Frost Boiler Project. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of a boiler replacement at Frost Middle School from Contrast Mechanical in Macomb Township, Michigan, for a total cost of $76,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis, good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Great.
Good. We do have a Frost Boiler replacement in front of the board this evening. If I can take you back to earlier in the fall, the board had approved what we were calling the Frost Boiler Pilot. We were moving to, away from the lock-and-vire system that was in Frost, placed in the '90s, to a higher-efficiency Hamilton boiler. The overengineering from years back, we certainly realized we could find some efficiency in energy by making this change. So in the fall, we had removed some of the boilers, but left some in place as backups of the old lock-and-vire. We put in three new higher-efficiency boilers, and we ran the winter to see what the data was. This sinking fund project is something that we were hoping to review the data, and if successful, then replicate it in other buildings, because we need to replace boilers in multiple buildings throughout the district. So at this point, upon review of the data, as we discussed at the committee as a whole, what we plan to do now is to put that fourth and final Hamilton boiler into the Frost Boiler Room, disconnect all the lock-and-vire boilers, and run one more full winter season. And as successful as we think it will be, then we will know to be able to proceed to other buildings across the district. Again, this is a sinking fund project. So what's in front of the board this evening and being recommended is one boiler to finish off the Boiler Room at Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of bid results for Frost Boiler Project. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 7E, approval of bid results for pool boilers at Franklin High School and Stevenson High School. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of pool boilers for replacement projects at Franklin High School and Stevenson High School to Goya Mechanical in Flint, Michigan, for a total cost of $109,900.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis.
President Johnson, the pool boilers at Franklin High School and Stevenson High School are 20-plus years old. They were installed in 1995, and the current pool boilers that we are proposing and recommending for both of those high school pools are replicating the same, more updated and efficient boiler that we have in the pool at Churchill High School. Essentially, what we're doing is taking out pool boilers that are not only 20-plus years old, but were originally at their peak, 80% efficient. They're probably running more in the '60s at this point, and we're replacing them with 99.5% efficient boilers. So we will find efficiencies in that area alone, not to mention, we can get this job done in three, four weeks when there is no student use, and we'll be up and ready to go without loss of pool boilers for the start of the new school year.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of bid results for pool boilers at Franklin High School and Stevenson High School. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item 7F, approval to purchase flexible furniture for Emerson Middle School, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Emerson Middle School from Interior Environments in the amount of $39,996.15.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Willemburg.
Thank you, President Johnson. As we have discussed through several Board of Education meetings, this is Phase 3 of the Secondary Furniture Replacement Plan from bond funds, from the 2013 bond funds, and it's set aside to dedicate and create contemporary and creative learning environments in our school. The Emerson staff has focused their funds into a redesign and an enhancement of furniture in a section of their library media center that can be organized for small-group workstations and presentations, and individualized workstations, as well as areas for research and for students to work with their personal devices, their laptops, and their Chromebooks. Their plan also calls for an assortment of alternative seats and desks that can be utilized on a checkout basis for individual students for use in their classrooms. As mentioned, Emerson has consulted with Interior Environments in this redesign of these learning spaces. Total cost, request of this project is $39,996.15. I am hopeful you are excited with this purchase as the Emerson community.
Thank you, Mr. Willemburg. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Frank.
We are excited. We got to see the pictures at the last meeting, and I think this is, with all the schools, what they're doing is phenomenal and really great for the student learners, so we're very excited.
It's very colorful.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Centers.
I just want to say that we're very happy that each school is able to customize and really kind of put their own stamp on things and look at their own personal needs. So thank you for arranging that, and going school by school, it's a more detailed process and more labor-intensive, but it's really great to see that each school is getting what they need.
And as we did with the Franklin Plan, we will get some pictures out on the district website of what these areas will look like.
Thanks, Franklin.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Willemburg, do we have a timeframe for when the furniture will be put in?
We expect it to be in and ready to go at the start of the new school year.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval to purchase flexible furniture for Emerson Middle School, 2013 bond. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. That moves us to item 7G, approval to purchase flexible furniture for LCTC, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Livonia Career Technical Center from Interior Environments in the amount of $14,912.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton. Again, Mr. Willemburg.
And again, thank you, President Johnson, and along the same lines as we just discussed regarding the Emerson Plan, the Career Center has their own plan to enhance, to create contemporary, exciting, and has their own plan to enhance, to create contemporary, exciting, and creative learning spaces in their school. Their efforts are directed towards enhancing the seating arrangements in their student lounge area, as well as into an executive eight-foot table with chairs for small group collaboration and for presentations. The Career Center has consulted with Interior Environments for the design and selection of the furniture in these areas. The total cost of their request is $14,912. And again, we're hopeful that you're as excited as they are for their new learning spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Wollenborg. Questions or comments from the board? Are you just as excited?
I'm just as excited. Yes.
Still excited.
All right. Then we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval to purchase flexible furniture for LCTC 2013 bond. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. That'll bring us to item 7H, approval of Wayne RISA budget for 2018-19. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the resolution supporting the general fund operating budget for the 2018-2019 school year for the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, RISA.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Allison, or Mrs. Smith is going to help us with that.
Thank you very much. There are 56 intermediate school districts here in the state of Michigan, and Wayne RISA is one of those. They service the 33 local school districts here in Wayne County. Michigan law requires that the intermediate school district board submit its proposed budget no later than May 1st to each of the board of each constituent district for review. Law also requires that no later than June 1st of each year, the board of each constituent district shall review the proposed intermediate school district budget, shall adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed intermediate school district budget, and shall submit to the intermediate school district any specific objections or proposed changes that constitute district board, that the constituent district board has to the budget. The proposed budget for 2018-19 was presented to the Wayne RISA board on April 25th for a review and discussion. The official district hearing will be held at the Wayne RISA Board of Education meeting on May 16th, followed by a formal approval at the June 20th meeting of the board. Wayne RISA maintains eight separate funds, similar to Livonia, how we keep separate funds. They have a general fund, an enhancement millage fund, Act 18 fund, cooperative education fund, a funded projects fund, a special education fund, Medicaid fund, and finally, a capital projects fund. None of the eight funds have significant changes from the current year budget. We noted during last week's Committee of the Whole meeting that several of the budgets do have healthy fund balances, and we discussed having conversations with Wayne RISA over the coming year on how those funds can be used to further support the local districts. Wayne RISA is presenting a very fiscally sound budget for 2018-19, and it's with that that I recommend that we support their budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board?
No.
No? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of Wayne RISA's 2018-2019 general fund operating budget. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield is not here. President Johnson.
Good save. Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to item 8, Personnel Matters. Item 8A is leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Kay Campbell, August 13th, 2018. Michelle Chafin, 2018-19 school year. Sharice Howell, 2018-19 school year. Lindsay Obenauer, 2018-19 school year. Beth Uhas, 2018-19 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. I'd just like to comment that each of these leaves is requested and recommended consistent with the terms laid out in the LEA collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the leaves of absence. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 8B is resignations. This is for the board's information only, it requires no vote. That will take us to item 8C, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Mary Ann Bubar, Mary Beth Conger, Laurel Kostin, Karen DePero, Deborah Hunt, Cheryl Hunter, Susan Gendrusick, Eileen Mayer, Rochelle Rata, Michael Stewart, Barbara Stoner, Joanne Tullis, and Kathy Zalinski.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, tonight we bring before you the names of 13 individuals who will be retiring. These individuals leave with a combined 284.4 years of service. That's an average of almost 22 years per person. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank these individuals for their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools, and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in their honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Yes.
You know, with that experience, we might just vote no. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, to adopt resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Again, congratulations to all the retiring teachers, and good luck on your next job. That'll take us to item 9, Hearing from Board Members. Item 9A is the first reading of a board policy, JGCB. Dr. Terrell, are you going to help us with that?
Absolutely. Good evening.
Thank you.
The Policy Committee has reviewed this policy on immunizations with proposed language that removed the word inoculation. I bring this board policy, JGCB, forward for your review and possible adoption at a future meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? This is just a simple word change, is it not?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, then, if no questions or comments, then this will go on for our next regular meeting for the second reading. That moves us to item 9B, Second Reading of Board Policy, BHA Code of Ethics. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy BHA Code of Ethics.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Oquist?
Yes, thank you so much, President Johnson. Each year, we are so pleased to bring forward this very important document for the review by the Board of Education. It is a document designed by the board that is part of the bylaws, referred to as our Code of Ethics. And the board took time at a study session, a Committee of the Whole meeting, to review each element of the Code of Ethics, reviewed each bullet point, which refers to the actions, behaviors, and beliefs represented by each of our board members. And then the final section of the Code of Ethics speaks to specifically the unique role of the president of the Board of Education. Personally, I know on behalf of our district, we are so proud to have a board that believes that this document is not only essential to review each year, but is very, very important to have a well-functioning board that represents our district so very well, certainly reflective of an earlier honor that the board received in their commitment to their professional development. This Code of Ethics is something that's reviewed, and even though all of the elements were there, there were still a number of areas that were updated this year. I believe there were six different bullets on which at least some tweaks were made to best represent the beliefs and actions of our Board of Education. Once the Code of Ethics is adopted, we do have a large poster-sized copy of the Code of Ethics that will be signed by the board members and proudly displayed next to our Livonia Public Schools shared vision.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. As a matter of fact, once we vote on this, we do have a copy here. We will move to the table, and we'll go ahead and sign it. This is, we believe this is such an important document for us to guide us as a board, that we've decided we want to read the entire Code of Ethics. And we'll start with Mrs. Burton, if you lead us off, because you made the motion. And then each board member will just take a bullet point and read it until we're finished.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'll read the opening paragraph and the first bullet point. As members of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, we shall promote the best interests of the school district as a whole, and will make decisions that place student learning and the success of all students first by adhering to the following educational and ethical standards. As a board member, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, height, weight, marital status, handicap, or disability.
I will be a personal advocate for the work, good work, of the district.
I will focus board action on policymaking, strategic planning, and designating and evaluating the superintendent.
I will recognize that the role of the board is to govern and oversee the management of the district. I will delegate authority to the superintendent for the day-to-day operations of the district, and will not participate in the day-to-day operations.
I will review and evaluate all policies, bylaws, procedures, and processes of the board, and will work to make desire changes so they will be current and relevant.
I will follow established board operating procedures.
I will come to board meetings prepared to discuss and take action on all agenda items. I will study the material in the board packet, seeking clarification if needed prior to each board meeting.
I will give the superintendent or board president notification of my concerns prior to the board meetings, so that the concerns can be properly addressed.
I will seek, or I will understand that I have not only the right, but the duty, to express my views and opinions and ask questions at the board table. It will make a good faith effort to understand the views of others.
I will recognize that the board must make decisions as a whole in public. I will base all decisions on the available facts and my independent judgment, and I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to individuals or special interest groups.
I will avoid being placed in a conflict of interest, and if such a conflict is unavoidable, I will disclose such interests and abstain from voting on such matters.
I will respect the consensus and support the decisions of the board and their implementation.
I will recognize that while I am free to express my personal views, the board president is the spokesperson for the board, and the superintendent is the spokesperson for the district.
I will be respectful and listen to all ideas presented to the board, be it from parents, staff, students, community members, other board members, or other stakeholders. I will listen and then refer any person to appropriate personnel.
I will communicate to other board members and the superintendent expression of public reaction to board's policy and school programs.
I will exercise caution when communicating between and among board members via electronic communication, and will abide by the Open Meetings Act.
I will hold confidential all matters that, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals, schools, or the district. I will keep confidential all information that is privileged under applicable law, including closed-session discussions.
I will stay informed about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs, providing needed information, for example, those sponsored by my state and national school board associations.
I will take no private action that will compromise the board, the administration, or the district.
I will refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain.
I will support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as district staff.
I will support and protect district personnel in the proper performance of their duties.
I will, along with my fellow board members, review, revise, and sign the Code of Ethics annually at the beginning of each year.
As board president, I will ensure that persons addressing the board follow established guidelines as outlined in board policy.
I will advise persons addressing the board to do so in a respectful manner, and not allow rude and indecent behavior, profane, or, I'm sorry, profane or indecent discourse to be directed toward the board, the superintendent, or others during board meetings.
I will ensure that all board members are given an opportunity to express their views. I will work toward building consensus among all board members.
I will follow parliamentary procedure to the extent that it does not conflict with board policy or state law.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt our Code of Ethics. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. And now, if we can go over and sign the Code of Ethics. Thank you. All right, then, we will continue with item 9C, Hearing from Board Members. We're going to change our procedure a little bit. In the recent past, we've been selecting one board member to speak on behalf of the board, and we sort of felt that perhaps that was getting into a bit of a rut, and we were just rehashing what was happening during the meetings. So we decided that Mrs. Oquist would give us the best update during her superintendent's update, but then the board would have an opportunity at this point, if anyone had anything additional to add, you are free to do so. So if there's anyone else who would like to add anything tonight? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. I'd like to recognize and commend all of our students who participated in the recent Youth Making a Difference celebration, which was held at Franklin, and I'd also like to thank the Livonia PTSA Council for sponsoring it. And I'd also like to thank the Livonia PTSA Council for sponsoring it. If you've never been, it's the most amazing thing to walk and see the displays of the different projects that our children have done in support of their communities, their families, and their schools. It's a very humbling experience, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
In May, there are, as Mrs. Oakwest mentioned, a multitude of opportunities to participate in the activities going on with our schools. I had the privilege this morning of being at Cleveland and listening to the children give their musical performance. It was phenomenal. The kids were, they're so little, and they were so spot on. They did a great job. They were really, really cute. But I do encourage you to seek out the activities that are going on in your elementary school, middle school, or high school. But if you want to find out what's going on at your local school that's closest to you, or those that your children are either attending or did attend in the past, hop on the website, and you can go to schools and drop down to whichever school you're choosing, and go look at their calendar, and you can find, I guarantee, in the month of May, you'll find many opportunities. But the public is certainly welcome to concerts and art fairs and so forth, and there are so many going on at this time of the year. But do spend a little bit of time at your local school, just enjoying what the kids have produced over the whole year. It's been terrific.
Any other comments? I will conclude with, I want to commend all of our students for their conduct on April 20th. This could have been a day that there could have been a lot of chaos. Our students showed tremendous maturity, understanding of the issues, and they conducted themselves in an unbelievable fashion. And I just want to congratulate all of you for the way you handled yourselves. Thank you. And if there is nothing else, we've come to the end of our agenda, and if there's no other business before the board, we are adjourned. Thank you.